Today, this is the City of Pleasantville City Council working. Day's date is November 20, 2023, time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been advertised as the city's newspaper performance for the whole public. Meeting has a weather, sunshine or?
Davenport.
Present.
Catalara.
Here.
Thomas, President of Kamona.
Present.
Luria.
Present.
Buckley.
Present.
Siskel.
Present.
All the teams.
Did you say motion approved, President?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the agenda.
Okay, first is orders number 25, second reading, public hearing will be held. It's fixing the salaries and of officials and employees of the city.
I want to pull that. I want to pull that because there's increases, council gets that all in here, and there's increases on here that we did not discuss.
So you'll need to have a motion to pull it and refer it to committee? That's where you want to go?
Yes, or we can put, we can talk about it now, yes.
You have, you need a motion.
We're going to talk about it in executive session, but motion.
Motion.
Wait.
No, it's not exactly.
I know what you're saying, it's not exactly, so I know what you're saying. But we're going to still go into the executive session. Motion to pull salary orders. Salary increases.
So we're discussing that tonight?
Can discuss it tonight, we're in executive session. And there's salary increases on here that we didn't discuss. Motion to pull. All in favor?
No. No, okay, this is what happens. If you want to pull it, you can pull it and you can refer it back to committee. Okay, but you can't discuss it here with it pulled. Alright, so motion made by.
So we can't, excuse me, before we go into it, you're not going to be able to discuss it tonight?
You can't discuss an ordinance or a second reading in the public that you pulled. You're pulling it for a purpose. If the purpose is to refer it back to committee, then we discuss it there. But you cannot, this is your hearing, your public hearing. So if you're essentially pulling it for whatever purpose because there, something came up or whatever, then you can pull it. But you can't discuss it in an open public meeting. So you cannot just. You can go, you can only go into executive session if it's a personnel, specific personnel issue, if it's investigatory, if you think that it is attorney-client privilege. So we want to share a little bit more about it that would warrant executive committee session. You can, you can do that, or you could ask for, or you could ask for a motion to modify the agenda order. If you want to modify the agenda order and wait and put that as the last item on the agenda.
Understood, can be in the executive session.
Well, we're going into executive session regardless.
Has anything changed between first reading and second reading? Nothing has changed between the first reading and the second reading, correct?
I think something had according to the council president.
Did you make your change?
So there's, there's, there's two ways in which this can go. And you actually have a motion. You have a second. Unless you are withdrawing your second, then this is limited discussion, which we're in right now, and then a vote, right? So there's already a motion and a second on the floor to pull it. You can always bring it back for a hearing at a later date. If you want to rescind your motion, or if there's another motion to amend the current motion, right? You can entertain an amendment to the motion. And the amendment to the motion, if someone wants to make one, can be for purposes of moving it to another section in the agenda.
Which would possibly be the end of the agenda and then after the work session you wanted to executive session to talk about?
Can I just say one thing?
No, no, I'm not going to ask a question.
Unless you believe that there's something in there that is personnel, that is not important to the Open Public Meetings Act, that is potential pending litigation, that is something that is confidential, then it wouldn't be discussed in executive session. If you believe that it meets the standard of the executive session, and you don't want to disclose it here to me in front of everyone, then we can discuss that in executive session.
You already got the second, right?
For executive session.
The second, what's for, the second is for the pull it?
You can make, here's what, here's an easy way to do this. Let me solve this problem. If you'd like to make a motion to go into executive session now, if it doesn't warrant executive session, I will tell you, and then we will come back out.
Yes, that's what we want to do.
Go ahead.
And you can make that motion to go in at any, at any, at any point. We're still in work session right now. If you want to do it now, this is probably the best way to do it.
There's an idea, why didn't we have a finance meeting before we got here? He's the chairperson. Could've called any meeting, we could've had it via Zoom, and we would've had this rectified.
Mr. Cosby, can you say it again? Just try to accept it. Say it again.
Well, no, you have a motion already pending.
Motion for executive session.
No, no, we're going to ask, listen. Rescind, you can rescind your second. Rescind your second.
Rescind my, I'm rescinding the second.
Okay. Without a second, motion down. Alright? Now you want a motion to go into executive session.
That's a motion for a second session.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? At this time, council is going to go into executive session, any work on the public can be moved.
If it was.
So motion for a second session.
So we're all spoken back. Okay, the body went into executive session for the purposes of employee salaries, but also investigative matters, and there was some discussion on litigation, pending litigation.
Motion to take it, say. All in favor? Get away from our, come back in.
Yeah, but you want a break?
All in favor? Motion for a second? All in favor? You have a question? Excuse me, the.
The body discussed.
The arms.
Mine's on the.
Oh, I hit a.
Should've been your turn. Return order 25, we're all agreed to move on?
Yes.
Okay. Next is orders number 26, first reading, vacate proportion of Anzey Boulevard pursuant to the late space redevelopment plan as amended.
This is first reading?
This is first reading, yes.
Can I ask a question? I do have a question. I had someone call me just before this meeting, so I just want to get it out there. Can we get an explanation, this thing, on what this means? I tried to explain it to them, but I'm pretty sure they're going to be looking at the meeting. So as far as vacating Anzey Boulevard, just want to make sure that we put out here what's happening. They think that people are going to be moved out their homes or stuff like that. I just want to, I haven't let them know that's not, yes.
This is a street, so because of the redevelopment area, which is at the old high school location, they're changing the entrance into Hampton Court and Baby Laden. So they're vacating one section, and they'll be creating another section for them to get in. So there'll be no interference?
Yes.
With anyone's home or anything like that?
I was just wanting to make sure that we put it out here. I can ask one question, is the street next to the church, which is Anzey, that part is not going to be mess, just the further end towards the bed, am I correct?
Any more questions? Say another, next.
Orders number 27, first reading, dedicated to certain public lands located in the city known as Block 245, Block 10.
Any questions?
Resolution 158 authorized the issuance of sale of up to $170,402 of special emergency notes of the city, making certain covetous to maintain the exemptions of interest on said notes for federal income taxation, and authorizes such further actions and making such determinations as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the interest and sell the notes.
Any questions? Say another, next.
Resolution 159 authorized submission of a grant application to the New York Department of Community Affairs fiscal year 2024 American Rescue Plan, filed by the grant program.
Can I? Is this specifically states for 2024? Is this inclusive of the firefighters we just hired? Are they part of that, or is this going to be new ones coming on that are going to be covered under this, this act of employees, this court protective here? Okay, okay.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I just want to go back, just go back for a second, and maybe Mr. Louie can explain, you know, why we're taking these notes out, because I didn't hear it.
Sure. This is year three of a short-term special emergency note we did back in 2020 because of COVID, and we paid over five years, this is year three. And then next year will be, we'll redo it. We kind of reano, we pay the entire thing off at one time, why would we do that? So we're paying one-third, it's to be to 60% of what's paid now. Next year we'll pay another 20%, and then in '25 we'll be done.
Resolution 160 authorizing removal of a previously imposed deed restriction on the real property located at 122-124 East Park Avenue, blocks 19 and 21, block 25, as shown on the tax map, and authorizing the taking of certain actions and connection therewith.
Any questions?
Yes, could that be explained? Just so we know, you know, what restrictions are you taking off, so let me know.
There's a single, this apparent deed that's applicable to this location, 122-124, is our guarantee currently has a single-family home deed restriction on it. After much research and going before committees and others, it was a recommendation from the committee to bring it to full council, to remove the deed restriction for the purposes of which the owner purchased it for, which he'll have to go food zone and other committees to get those approvals, but this is just authoritative, the removal of the single-family home.
So that means you can do rentals and things of that nature?
Any more questions? Next.
Next is review of the bill.
Evening. If we go into bills, if we're paid to the county, the county meeting, we'll see down the bottom, there's a number of them. We have the taxes for lane one. We had a bond payment, that was from a bond in 2014 of $433,000, payroll of $533,000. We have $200,000 that was transferred from our budget into our general capital line as the general capital fund as part of the approval of the budget to help finance some of our capital approvals we do. We're going to build to be paid. If we go down the bottom of number one, we'll see the HCUA, 520, 571, that is the fourth quarter, sort of bill that we owe to the county for our wastewater, and the 133 is our trash. We go to top of page two, we see future systems. We have had them do a software package for our road to recovery program of $25,000 that being picked up by the road to recovery branch. If you go to, go to page three, I'm sorry, page four, down near the bottom, double scoreboard of $830,000 out of the tax payment we transferred to school for this month. We jump over to page five, we'll see something, says fifth went down, took him down Stockton University. This is a agreement, we hired a police officer, Colton Reed, back in March. Stockton stole him from Atlantic City.
I'm sorry, we hired him last?
Policeman, back in March, the name was Colton Reed. Stockton stole him from Atlantic City, after Atlantic City paid the academy. We stole him from Atlantic City. We stole, I'm sorry, we stole it from Stockton. We had to pay them back stores. It's by law, if they leave within a two-year period, we're required to pay a little training that the prior agency paid for. So Stockton paid to Atlantic City, we're paying to Stockton because he transferred, he probably only been like 18 months out of the academy. He was number one on the list when we did it, and he's blood will resident, according to Captain Keith Wim, great cop. And so we had to pay Stockton for what they paid, kind of down the line. What it is, is we would've paid for it if we hired him fresh out of the process, more net for training. So we're paying the $22,000 to reverse Stockton, who were in person in that city.
So is this a practice that we want to, I guess we could talk about that in committee?
Well, we don't, it's a practice, not normally, because normally when we bring in officers, we bring in brand-new officers. So here's someone who was on the list, he was number one on the list, he wanted to come to Pleasantville. We saw the idea that it would be cheaper for him to come in, and pay Atlantic City, Stockton $22,000, and wait six months, and pay the academy $22,000.
Yeah, so I understand, he was on the list and all of that, but we done hired eleven people that weren't on the list.
Well, they have to go to the academy. Colton Reed does not have to go to, did not have to go to the academy.
All of those people selected.
They all have to go to the academy.
Which number, which one, what page is that?
Seven, page five. Let's see, 225.
Chair?
For Stockton University.
Next a question? Okay, Mr. Louie, so is this only for the first six months? Like where does it stop? Let's say if he's, if he's already been an officer, what, for two or three years, would we still have to pay that training?
If he had been an officer, if he had been an officer in Atlantic City for more than three years?
Okay.
We would have to pay that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Because when, when they train him and he leaves within a period of three years, receiving agency is required by law to pay the sending agency.
Makes sense.
Because he was an officer, so an officer. Mr. Cosby, what we're doing with what we just hired, they were hired as class two officers, so we should not make any payments. Colton Reed was a class three officer, full-time police officer, we brought him over to full-time police officer. What we're doing with the one we just hired, they're class two officers, we're bringing them in as a full-time officer. That's the difference in the law. Based on what our labor attorney says, we're not required to pay the training, we are required, we will be required to pay some of the uniform that they purchased for them. But for most part, whatever, they have to go back for continued training at the academy, and we will pay that portion of it.
For the class two officer?
Class two. If you're going from class two to class three, we don't have to pay the $22,000, we should pay for the additional training. Class three to class three, we have to pay back the training if done within three or four.
If I can add, Chair, just, and it works both ways, just remember, so, because it's not so much of a practice as a choice, so if one of our officers decides they want to go to another agency, and they're within that time period, and that agency is required to pay us, so it's just, it works both ways.
Assuming we let them go?
Yes.
Because they have to have approval from the sending agency as well. That's what we used to call a lateral transfer, you know, if they still learn the thing.
I think we hold, and government, it's two separate agencies.
This adds that, I'm sorry, President, but I know some officers who have left, but I don't, never recall that being one of them.
You won't see the income coming in on the bill, but these are bills can be impeded. We don't see that on the bills.
And since I've heard that ones that left have been here four, five, three, three years, some of them don't leave voluntarily. Some of them just are, have to leave, and some transfer, but it's normally after a period of three or four years. Because I've not, we haven't had any of that situation where people have left shortly after training to go somewhere else. Stockton pushed them off Atlantic City's list, we pushed them off of Stockton's.
We'll get where we have to. Can I raise a question?
Yes.
What is Water's Edge Environmental?
That is our LSRP for residential and remedial engineering. Old Troop Field. We have green acres that requested additional remedial work done at the Old Troop Field, and as LSRP, the license.
Site mediation. Is that covered under any kind of grant money for down there, or is this out of our own pocket? Is it grant, is this payment coming out of the grant?
No, it's coming out, it's coming out of the greeners, coming out of the grant. Any other question, first? Are the other bills or normal operating?
Next is public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on agenda items, agenda items only. Let's go forward.
Is it on? Hi, thank you. My name is Jose Alcántara, I'm a lawyer. I always want to thank you, even if I disagree with you, that your servant, your city, just do your best, and thank you. The city of Atlantic, I have to make two points. The city of Atlantic City, for example, has an administrator that gets paid 150 per year, and that's a person who's highly qualified with credentials, experience, training, education. Our administrator, as far as I know, is getting paid 165 per year with half those credentials. That's a lot of money. I, I'm not happy with that. That does not make sense. Second point, our city code is online. I do my homework, not even though I don't come here more often. This code has to, according to my knowledge, be put online to make it available for residents, especially those who are disabled and cannot make it to city hall. Part of that code has been taken down recently from the website. That's illegal. That part has been taken down, it's about the duties and responsibilities and obligations of directors of departments and/or administrators. I don't know, are we hiding something here, or am I just mistaken, or what? Third point, an RFQ or RFP was submitted to city council back in August, number, I'll look this up, 123-2023, a resolution, excuse me. And that resolution was for our indictment for proposals for forensic auditor of the city's financial records. And we need this, and it hasn't been done, to my knowledge, it has not been published. Whether or not, that's a real requirement, I think it is, but I'm not completely sure because it's a resolution. And it has to be published, so it will be 123-2023 for an independent CPA from to conduct a forensic audit, quote, "in the best interest of the city." And that was back in August of 2023. September, October, November, that's three months ago. What's going on, people? I'm a lawyer, but I'm a lawyer who understands that I don't know these things. So I'm saying it with humility. No one here other than myself and, Mr. Cosby's a lawyer, that we're trained to investigate these things, to look into it. I don't have the effort to put that much time into it. If you, or anybody here is not a lawyer, please don't be a lawyer. Leave that to the lawyers to do that. We cannot be, I'm not saying you are, I'm respecting you, but even if we disagree, I don't mind it. I don't mind being disliked, as long as it's intelligent dislike, it's good. So it's all right. So I, you know, ask those questions. I'm a person who comes here, I have no criminal record whatsoever, despite what other people think I have, I don't. Thank you so much. And I want to pass that resolution, I made a copy.
Anyone else from the public? Say another, did you say motion to close the public portion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, yeah.
For discussion, for, council, council, my word, please.
Well, I just want to address Mr. Alcaterra, right?
Yes, sir. If you didn't say anything, that's okay.
We just, we just discussed the, uh, comments.
We can't do that.
I'm sorry.
That's what I mean.
I'm sorry. Well, I'll have to say that.
Can't do that.
I have nothing at this time. And say a motion to close the session.
Motion.
Second. Good evening. This is the City of Pleasantville City Council, show regularly. The day's date is November 20, 2023, time is six, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Time is eight, P. L. Eight ten, okay. Time, so time is eight ten. This meeting has been duly advertised as the city's newspaper performance for the open public meeting, as well as the sunshine of all. Would you please stand for indication? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy love is as deep as the sea, and thy Spirit is as pure as the wind. We give the best of us, as we prepare those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from it. But not in heaven, but on earth, we glorify. Blessed is this to the flag of the United States of America, two for the public, for which stands one nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Davenport.
Present.
Catalara.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Luria.
Present.
Buckley.
Present.
Siskel.
Present.
All the teams.
Mayor, you have any?
No, I don't think so.
I have a question. Yes. I had to take a motion to disperse the people in the house.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Orders number 25, may I? Orders number 25, second reading, public hearing will be held, fixing the salaries of officials and employees of the city.
Now it's for the public to speak on orders 25. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on orders 25, please come forward, if not, so.
Not, so, um, I'm closing.
Hello, boy. How are you? Um, I'd like to know, um, are you speaking about two thousand and twenty-three or are you speaking about two thousand and twenty-four salaries? Two thousand and twenty-three.
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
But I thought you already settled that, two thousand and twenty-three, when you did the backpack and brought it up to date. The retroactive have brought it up.
And you don't need to understand, you don't have to answer any questions if you don't understand, it's just a couple of comments.
One question. I want to say back in, I'm going back to about September, okay? There was retroactive pay that was paid, firemen, crossing guards, okay? Was, is this a part of that or is this, this something new?
I have a question.
I don't care who answers.
Ms. Alcaterra, I don't know what you're speaking of or, you know, that information, Mark.
Um, I was speaking in reference to orders twenty-five.
I mean, I know what ordinance it is, but as far as you can answer to your question, I can't answer it because I don't know what you're speaking of as far as the backpack.
Okay.
It doesn't look like anyone of your...
They had retroactive pay that was owed to them and retroactive pay was brought up to date, okay? That's why I understood, you know what I'm saying?
Did the crossing guards get a raise?
Some of them did and some, some of them did, some of them did and some of them didn't, some of them are still not up to date. That's why I'm asking the question that I'm asking.
Because I know the chief of police said something about salaries of the crossing guards, but he left already.
And then some monies were owed to firemen also.
Then I definitely can't speak on it.
Okay.
That's not...
If I can...
These are only salary ranges, so anything that was retro would be included in that range. So we're not adding anything on, we're only adhering to the range.
Well, see, they didn't give us a copy of the range, that's why I got up there, asked my question because we don't have that.
And, and any of those retro things are all, they're all dictated to us by collective bargaining agreements. It isn't something that we just sat up here and said, we want to give them raises. It's all a matter of, this is what contractually we're obligated to do.
Okay, second question. So that means that, that their pay raise, okay, is going to come up to where every other county is in Atlantic County? Because right now, we're not where every other county is. That's my second question.
So let me just sit through you, Council President. The information that you're being given here is just as a courtesy, we don't have any documentation in front of us to really address specifically what you're speaking about. So the representations here come with a disclaimer, just to kind of give you some guidance, right? What you're looking, no, there's, there's not, this is not a comparison document to any other city in Atlantic County. This is just the salary range for twenty twenty-three, okay? And various employees are paid within that range. So the document kind of speaks for itself, but as far as it being comparable to other cities in Atlantic County, that's not the purpose of the document. And I don't think anybody here can or should answer that question because there are various cities in Atlantic County and then we would have to line up each one to give you the most accurate information, okay? So I, you know, and I, I just want to say that because I don't want them to say something on the record and then later on someone comes back and says, well, that wasn't, that wasn't exactly correct.
I appreciate that because the only reason why I threw that out there is because Pleasantville is on a lower scale than the rest of the counties. So that was why I threw that out there. You know, just, just throw it out there, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on this board?
May I? You, you're saying it in English, but some people in Spanish want to say something, they didn't understand that you said, anyone else?
Oh, I can, I can speak English.
Oh, oh, I know. Okay, now I know, sorry, sorry. Okay, you made a message clear, very good. All right, sorry. Sorry about that.
Well, my English is not perfect, but you can understand. I'm Milagro and we have a complaint about a neighborhood.
No, 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 this is not.
That's not yet, just give a few minutes, okay?
Don't go forward.
Okay.
Motion close to public portion. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, I need a motion for roll call.
Motion, second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Cabello.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum. Orders adopted. Orders number twenty-six, first reading, dedicating a portion of Asli Boulevard pursuant to the Lake Spade Development Plan as admitted.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Cabello.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Orders moved to second reading, scheduled for December the fourth. Orders number twenty-seven, first reading, dedicating southern public lands located in the city, known as block two forty-five, block ten.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Cabello.
No.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Orders moved to second reading, scheduled for December the fourth. Resolution one hundred and fifty-eight, authorizing issuance of sale of up to one hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and two dollars, and special emergency notes of the city, making certain covenants to maintain the exemptions of interest on said notes on federal income taxation, and authorizing first such further actions and making such determinations as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the issuance of settlement notes.
Motion, second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Cabello.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and fifty-eight, authorizing submission of a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, American Rescue Plan, firefighter grant programs.
Motion, second. That's fifty-nine.
I'm sorry, I'm going back. And second by Korea.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the correction. Uh, roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Cabello.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and sixty, authorizing the removal of a previously imposed deed restriction on the real property located at one twenty-two dash one twenty-four, East Park Avenue, blocks nineteen and twenty-one, block sixty-five, as shown on the tax map, and authorizes the taking of certain actions in the connection there with...
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Cabello.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bill list.
Motion, second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Cabello.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Need a motion to approve the vehicle licenses?
Motion, second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Cabello.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next, public portion, anyone from the public wish to speak?
She's standing, okay, she's the third one.
We can call her. Okay. Yes.
Milagro, for example?
Right, I have your roughly address.
Do you want to fill it? No, 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 I'm good. What, tengo nada?
Mm-hmm, yes, please.
Okay, the complaint we have is, we got a car wash that's through our house, we're doing noise, a lot of trash, a lot of drop selling from to our house.
What's the address?
They don't care.
Is that Reading Avenue? Address.
Uh, Washington Avenue, Pleasantville, Washington. Franklin Boulevard in Washington. This is getting out of control. We have no, we don't feel safe over there, you know? It's like too many trash, too many people, all nine. They open the trash can, take them all over and it's getting really bad. We need help. This is getting out of control. There's a lot of cars from some other place coming in front of us, they don't care, selling drugs, I guess. It's people like strangers coming to the car.
What time of night, you know, are they out here, are they out there all night?
All night, all night, believe me. I wake up three, four o'clock in the morning, we got a dog, German Shepherd, that he's giving him a steal. He know it's somebody in the backyard. We gotta close backyard, but they all way in the back, all night, all day. This is don't stop. It's like twenty-four hours.
Is this the new neighbor that just moved in?
No.
It's a new, it's a car wash.
Oh, it's because of the...
And the laundry too. They have no employee over there to wash there. God is by himself. Who got a business by himself? Like, take care of whoever call over there, do whatever they want.
Yes.
See, if I can give you my card?
Yes, ma'am.
So we can, this sounds like a call, public safety, and we'll bring you those, find those committees, if that's okay?
This is my number, but I need you to, you know, need your contact information. Okay, okay. Yes, ma'am, we need help, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll translate.
No, you can't.
Can't?
No.
Even though I'm a certified CSR, sorry, sorry. Whatever, it's okay.
So, what, so, so you, she could just talk to you and you could talk on her behalf?
Okay.
It's not a, it's not an interpretive process, right? She's just talking to you and you're talking in the record, okay?
Through me, that's right, thank you. Well, it's the same problem. We're desperate. I don't feel safe where I live. They're, they're even selling drugs there and, and they hide there. I have nieces and the other day they try to force my door open and I'm scared because what would happen to them? I need help.
Before you do that, excuse me, you need to put a name or...
Who knows? Judy Molina.
Is this a separate household or the same thing?
We live in the same house.
No, not the same house.
Oh, neighbors, 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 sorry.
This is a separate household.
That's it? Help us, please.
Call.
Yes.
Contact information, okay? You know, they're contacted, yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Alcaterra, can you ask her, has, have the police been called? Have they tried to get law enforcement down there to deal with that situation?
We call up police all the time. They come. There's nothing that's going on, that's resulting.
That's the same period we've had a lot of...
I don't feel so safe.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I just am here to say thank you for passing resolution one hundred and sixty. Thank you, Linda, city administrator, the mayor, and the city council, and I appreciate that and I am thankful for that lifting restriction so that I will be able to go to the zoning board, be heard on the project that I'm trying to do. So I wanted to just say...
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, Sal. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public? Yes.
I am representing the veteran in Pleasantville that he wants to say thank you for the new program that you have started and what you have done to redo his house. He said, to say thank you.
Who's that, Ms. Water?
Um, I don't know his name.
What was the program?
Um, the new veterans program.
Oh, Mr. Brown.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
He started to tell you guys, thank you very much. And I also have good news for you, okay? The Jokers, JV and Varsity came back with the championship. P G did not, but they did.
Actually, it was JV and Taxi.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, JV and Taxi.
I figured that he...
I was freezing out there at night.
So it's not.
I froze.
I froze a little bit too, but you know what? It was worth it.
It was worth it.
It was worth it.
It was worth it.
Uh, one more question, if you don't mind. Is it some type of way that we could give them a nice little banquet, something that they haven't had in a long time? I mean, you guys could all be together and discuss it.
The organization usually do it all, they've done that for themselves.
Well, what they have been doing is fundraisers because they don't have a sponsor.
Right, we fund fundraisers because they do the coin drive twice a year. And they usually do that for themselves. And they have bikes.
Yes, I know. I know. And they wanted to say thank you for your support. You're welcome.
Anyone else in the public?
Just a little FYI, just got to talk to our chief. I was told by the union, they raised eight thousand dollars for operation form that's going to be matched by the I F F for coats, hats and gloves. Just wanted, that was over this weekend. Just wanted to thank you guys.
You do it every year too, right?
Yes, this was the, this was the, the most successful year they've had so far.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm saying motion close to public portion. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the council mayor.
Mayor? Okay, yes. I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. We heard your concerns and hope they can be addressed. As council, I, um, oh, I wanted to let everyone know that future leaders, Dawn, with Dawn Vivens, Dawn Rice Vivens, got a national award, only two in New Jersey got this recognition, for the Century Community Learning Center. That's an award that is only given, it's a prestigious award that she's been given with her program for the youth and... with her program for the youth, and there's more information to follow. I don't have all the information, but it's a big deal that she got the award, and there's only been two in New Jersey in this national recognition. We had a good vet program, a veterans program, and I just wanted to thank John Vettis and the auxiliary club for doing that, and a bunch of us up there. Went to the service, it was a beautiful day that day, November 11. And, um, the New Jersey League of Municipalities was in town, had a lot of good sessions, so we got to do a lot of networking to see what other communities are doing. And a lot of the things that, we can't compare ourselves with other communities. We have to just stand alone as Pleasantville, and the funding that we have, we're able to use as we want to use, as we see fit to use it. And can't really compare whether anyone else gets a raise, or gets a job, or anything like that. So it was a lot of good networking. Take care and have a good evening. And Council, awesome.
Councilman, Partito.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out with your concerns, thank you. Also, it's Thanksgiving week, so have a Thanksgiving for everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Councilor, Brooklyn.
I just wanted to say thank you to the council person that participated in the turkey distribution. The fellowship, highly grateful to your effort and your partnership. And mayor, I want to say thank you for allowing them to distribute the turkeys here. And also, I want to inform the council that we were privileged to participate in the ribbon cutting of the, our rubber lab at IDEA Institute. It was a wonderful thing, it stayed on display. There were rubers available to be, that were serving us while we were at the program. And you did go there and see it, and appreciate why it's coming in our community, and I was highly grateful to Ryan for honoring such a project. And mayor, thank you for allowing me to stand on your behalf.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Do that in place of the protest. Mr. President, I wanted to say, Bishop, I heard the turkey success was really, really good, and Fellowship of Churches. So thank you all for doing that, and they said they're gonna continue to do it in the future as long as they're good. So thank you.
Councilman?
Well, I want to say thank you for everybody coming out. Have a happy Thanksgiving. Be safe, drive safely, don't drink and drive, no texting. Thank you, and have a blessed night.
All right, thank you.
Yes, first of all, I just want to say happy holidays, you guys enjoy the holiday. I want to put out a little bit of information because I had a conversation with our business administrator about rent control, because there's a lot of concern about that going on now. So I know we're gonna be addressing that in the future. So I just wanted that to be known, because someone asked me today about the rent control problem, and that we're all going to address that, probably give you some information in the near future. Congratulations to the Jokers, and everybody enjoy the holiday.
Councilman, Councilwoman, family.
Congratulations to the Jokers and everybody who sat out in the freezing cold and watched games, no matter where they were, because it was cold on Saturday. Council of Churches gave out the turkeys, but thanks to the fire department, they really beyond, over and beyond what they had to do, because I don't even think they were affiliated with it, but they came out and they gave out the turkeys. So it was very nice of you guys to come out there. It made things go along a lot faster. Councilwoman Thomas had the roller skating party at the rec center, Angie.
Yes, we had so much fun.
It was so successful. It was such a nice, nice thing. There wasn't, there was a tear because somebody fell and had a bump on his head, but he was okay. But it was such a nice event, and it was something different for the kids. And I've been, we had, there were a couple people that didn't read the fine print, and it said, but they're on their own skates. So we're trying to alleviate that problem. And I've already collected some roller skates to take up to the rec center. I would just like anybody who's out here watching, listening in the next couple of days, if you go through your garage, getting ready to put up Christmas decorations, if you have roller skates that nobody wants, can't wear, too little, whatever, we'll gladly take them. You contact me or any, just bring them to us, because we don't want to turn away one single kid for this event, because it was a great, great thing. December 1st is the winter winterland, and I guess that's when we're turning on the street lights, too, is December 1st. So that's always kind of fun for that, because it puts Pleasantville on a really good light there. And that's it, thank you.
I just want to add, excuse my voice, I just want to add congratulations to the Jokers. You know, it was a great team, I mean, a great game against the Piggly Lakers, and I can say the Lakers won, and my grandson is one of the Lakers, so I couldn't represent that night, so that's why I lost my voice. The other thing is, we actually had 300, well, the Fellowship of Churches had 300 turkeys that we gave out in 45 minutes. So that's, that a lot, there were people out there lined up at 8:00, you know, in the morning, and they stayed out there in the cold, you know, for something that they really needed. Then you have to get out of their cars, and then they didn't, the cars just go.
We had walking line, right?
I do see that the new Dunkin', well, Dunkin' Donuts is open on Black Horse Pike, and it will be doing a re-grand opening, I think Ms. Blair said on December 9th. So if she doesn't come to present that to us and the community again, I would have it on my Facebook, the information on my Facebook. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you out there, and see you in December.
Councilor, now, we have something.
I'm sorry, I have something else I needed to say. I forgot what that was, it was last week, but North Main Street School, Mr. McGamie guy did a Veterans Day event down there, and she had numerous people showed up. It was very nice, and I brought someone up in Motion City, and they plan on doing their program from North Main next year, free of charge. So it's something that the council needs to think about, and, you know, we need to all get together and come down there and be a part of it, because this guy has millions of viewers or listeners that come in, so it's going to be really nice. Just wanted you guys to know that. She did a, Mr. McGamie guy did a heck of a job down there, it was really nice.
Is that the radio guy that you want?
Yes, yes, and he showed up, he spoke, and he pledged to come there next year, bring the station there, and he said he would like for the city and everybody to be able to show up, so just giving you guys a heads up, look out for next year.
I got a chance to speak to him.
Yeah.
Did you just leave on?
Yes.
Did you know, speak to him?
The police department.
All right, okay.
Jane, you want to mention the police department's effort with Thanksgiving? Or can I mention it?
Yes.
Thank you. In light of all of the Thanksgiving testimonies, right, to let everyone know that we are certainly in the, in the service of this community, in addition to the Fellowship of Turkeys efforts, the police department, I think we must acknowledge their efforts, because it comes right out of their pockets. There was a line down the street today for their turkey giveaway. In addition to that, they had all of the size and all the things that you need with your turkeys to so many residents, but there was a line of people, I don't know how many they gave out, but that was a success as well. So thank you to our police department for their efforts.
Thanks for coming, she's such a, such a, such a.
Yes.
I think there was 28 dinners.
28 dinners?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Whole dinners.
It was, on the 11th, it was the Veterans Day. I am a vet, and I got a chance to speak at the, I got a chance to speak at the program. And if, again, if we never really, really actually thought about it, or if we took it for granted, those that serve really actually protect us, and you can see in various countries, we got, maybe we have a part of the United Nation here, with so many people from other countries, but being solid in your defense, in the country's defense, to be able to have the ability to protect us and keep us from people just walking in, walking in your house, metaphorically speaking, walking in your house and going in your, in your refrigerator, and there's nothing that you can do about it. So God bless our vets for that. But during the duration of that time, there was a funeral that took place, I thought, that was at the same time, it was Ms. Quander's. She was in our Democratic Club for a very, very long time. She was an upstanding woman in our, in our, in our community. She is a police officer, and she was a vet, too, as well. A dear friend of mine, I didn't get a chance to say my about it like I, like I thought, like I thought I should have wanted to. So I just want to take a moment of silence for her. Moment of silence. Congratulations to, congratulations to the Jokers for their success. You know, we hope they're just feeder leads, a lot of times, little guys, they play those, and they don't get a chance to go to the next, they don't go to the next level, they born out of little, they're hopefully just feeder leads for the high school. And happy Thanksgiving. Have a very, very happy Thanksgiving. Be safe, enjoy your family, enjoy your friends, and God bless the city of Pleasantville. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion.
Second. On the favor?
Aight.
All right, sir.